Special meeting to order on March 20th. April, will you call the roll please?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Very good. In the back of the room, you will find the Open Meetings Act is posted. We are here to review the tenure facilities and infrastructure plan. I'm going to turn this over to Lanny Boswell.
All right. Thank you very much, Connie. Tonight's topic comes from the Planning Committee, where I served with Matt and Barb. And I'd like to start off by thanking Liz, Scott, and the entire operations team for all their work on this update. There are literally hundreds of pages of information that go behind all the lines that are on the plans that we're going to look at tonight. A lot of checking, rechecking, discussions with staff. As you'll recall, as board members, we did city tours last fall. This, of course, is a follow-up work session to a work session we did last fall. And much of the information that's presented tonight is in response to the questions that were asked at that work session. So tonight, we welcome further comments and questions, and thank you all for being here. With that, I will turn it over to Liz.
Good evening. We're excited to be here to continue a conversation, and we think it's a conversation we're going to continue to have for years to come in an ongoing process. We'll get started right away. We have a special guest that Mr. Wieskamp will introduce, and then when he is done with his portion, I'll move up front with Scott to field your questions and work through the LPS portion. So, here we go.
All right. Well, good evening. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity, and we're glad to be here. And we really want this work session to be very fluid, very conversational. The last time, it was more of a presentation. We did field a number of questions towards the end, but I think tonight, as we progress, we would be very happy if you would interrupt and ask questions so that we can clarify or address those questions as we move forward. So there's a lot of information. Some of it is a little bit redundant, some of it we might even call old news. You know, we're going to talk about Lincoln is growing. We've known that for a long time. Our student population has been showing that the last several years, and so it's old news, but it's still important news for us as we continue to move forward with our facilities and infrastructure. And so it's a concern that we just need to make sure that we stay focused on it, that we address those challenges as they come forward, as we continue to grow as a city and a community. And David Carey here gracefully came tonight. We really appreciate his presence. He's going to give a short presentation early on here. He's the Director of Planning for Lincoln and Lancaster County. I think he'll give you a little history about the comprehensive plan and what drives the city growth, which is really what drives Lincoln Public's growth. And so I think it works hand in hand. We have a great working relationship, not only with David and the Planning Department, but with many of the city groups and departments and organizations. So we really appreciate that, and I think you'll see some of the information that you see tonight as a result of that collaboration and relationship. The plan is also going to be the sixth version once it is adopted. We began this process in 2005, prior to the bond issue that passed in 2006. And this is really based on the board's foresight back then. Many of you were maybe on the board, many of you were maybe part of a task force that was commissioned by the superintendent at that time. And so, again, your efforts are really what drives this. And we call it a 10-year plan, but the other thing about it is, this vision is much further than 10 years. And if you drive around our community and look at our 60-plus facilities, they haven't been around just for 10 years. There's a number of them that have been here for 20 years and 30 years, 40 years, 50 years. My office is across the street from a building that's been there for 101 years. So your vision and your decisions last far more than 10 years. And we need to realize that when we make these decisions and recommendations, because it's not just about tomorrow or a couple of years down the road. It's about what might be going on in our community in 30 or 40 or 60 years. That's the type of investment and commitment and decision-making that we're doing and you as a board are doing. And so it's hard to do that sometimes when you want to drill into the details, but the long-range planning is really critical, and that's where your vision is so important. And so, again, we appreciate your commitment to that. We think this plan has been a good process since it was adopted in 2005, and I think this will just add to that legacy of how important planning is on your part. So with that, I'm going to introduce David here. This first slide here just reminds you that the last approved plan was December of 2013, and it was the fourth version approved, and we're going to talk a little bit more in-depth. And so with that, I'm going to let David Carey kind of move forward through his presentation, and then we'll kind of come back to some of the information that we want to provide.
Scott, actually, if I could interrupt you a second. Could we have the monitors turned on on our stations up here?
Yes.
Good. Oh, it's quite all right.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks very much. All right. Thanks, David.
Okay. Thank you, Scott, and thank you for turning the monitors on. That'll help me immensely as well. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I am David Carey with the Planning Department. And as Scott mentioned, we have a very longstanding and very healthy relationship between not just the Planning Department, but other city departments, and Scott, and other members of the LPS team. And what we have been able to gain out of that high level of coordination and understanding is better decision-making on both ends. So that is, if nothing else, that's something that I would like to report to you tonight, is that our information that we share, and then the information that we get back from Scott and his team, really helps us make for better decision-making when we look at the long-term vision of our community. I'm going to focus on the comprehensive plan, get into that a little bit, about what it is and how we use it, and then specifically about how we look at things like expansion of the school district and the needs for schools in general. But one thing that is really embedded in our comprehensive plan for our long-range view of things, and the current one goes out to the year 2040, it is that we are one community. That is a very strong theme in our comprehensive plan. It has been for many years now. And one of the reasons for that is because of the policies and the relationship that we have with Lincoln Public Schools. One community, one school district. That is a very strong message that we have in our plan, and it is very useful to our community. It's one of the strengths of our community, is a strong public school system. I can't tell you how often I have very positive discussions with individuals from other communities in other states when I talk about our public school system and how we do things here and how the borders of our attendance areas grow with the annexations of our city. And there is a lot of interest in how we do things here, but also acknowledgement that we do it well here. So I'm very proud of it, and I hope you are too, for that matter. But that is just one thing that we have in our comprehensive plan. And I will point out that we have a fairly new comprehensive plan adopted. It was adopted in December of 2016. That was after about a year-long process in which we worked with our Planning Commission primarily to work through updates to the existing plan. This was what we consider a minor update. Doesn't mean it has insignificant decisions along with it. But back in 2011, when we adopted that plan, that too was a 2040 vision plan, and that was what we consider a more major update, where we looked at, broke down the basic assumptions in the plan, and really brought in a lot of new information. This time around, what we did was, we affirmed the basic assumptions of this plan, but then we moved forward with looking at things more closely, like the transportation element of the plan this time around, and not necessarily getting into all the details. We will be doing a major update of this plan, starting in most likely 2019, with the goal to have a new plan, a new major plan update completed by 2021. So that's something to keep in mind as well. So what we have done, though, is that we assume, we affirm, excuse me, some basic land use assumptions, our growth rate in this update of the plan, and I'll get into that in a moment, just to give you some ideas of what that means. We did spend a lot of time on this update of the plan, on the transportation element. The reason for that is that, based on federal regulations for us to qualify for federal funding for transportation projects, we have to have an updated transportation plan every five years. So what we do is, we take that opportunity to meet that requirement and refresh, if not do a major overhaul of our comprehensive plan. So that's the timing of what we work with here. What this update of the comprehensive plan did for us was that we had a public process. We had a lot of good input. We used our online presence with our website, as well as doing some online polling, to get a lot of good information, not scientific in this case, but good directive information for us, where people feel we are at with our comprehensive plan and our transportation plan. We have taken action on the plan. The Planning Commission has acted on the comprehensive plan update. The County Board has approved it, and the City Council has approved it. We also have a transportation plan that's through what's called the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that's more of the federal process that we have to go through for that planning process. That too was approved in 2016 by our Planning Commission. And then what we call the Officials Committee, which is a combination of the Mayor's Office, the City Council, the County Board, and the Department of Roads, also approved that transportation element. The transportation element is Chapter 10 in our comprehensive plan. It's the same information, just so you know. And then that also is a standalone document to meet some of those federal requirements. So some of the basic assumptions that, again, in this case, were reaffirmed as we went through this process. We maintained a 2040 horizon year. That's important to not change that every five years, mainly because we have a lot of other sub-studies that happen that want to use the same information. So instead of having to refresh all the data very quickly every five years, we have about a 10-year window there for that to happen. But it is something that we have been looking at, making sure that we can serve the demands of growth for our community out to the year 2040. That is one of the basic things we do in this comprehensive plan, both in land area as well as providing urban services, and that's a big point to be made here tonight. If nothing else, we really focus on getting sewer service to certain areas that make some sense, based on the growth projections for our community. Because without that sewer, you really can't develop land at any real density. It stays more rural in nature without that sewer service. So that's something that we really focus on. Water service as well is very important. One thing that, as I'm sure you've been keeping up with some of the discussion about our roads here in Lincoln, that is one of the major constant struggles that we have to keep up with growth in our community, is the road infrastructure. That's something that we're very actively discussing right now, as to what we can do to try to make sure we're getting adequate road networks out to those growing areas. And that is one thing that we struggle with, but it also is all towards trying to make sure that we're meeting the demands of the growth in our community. Some basic things for you to hear on our growth is that we grow by about 1.2% to 1.4% per year. That's somewhere in the range of 3,000 to 4,000 individuals added to the county population every single year. 90% of our growth is in the city of Lincoln, so you can run the numbers in that sense. We also project out what type of units we need to meet the demands of that growth in the community. We expect about 40% of our future units out to the year 2040, on average, to be through multifamily apartment units, not just single-family, but still 60% with single-family type of units. We also have a policy for infill in our community. If you've obviously noticed that we have quite a bit of infill development happening in downtown, some of those larger developments that are happening or about to happen. We also have, not just in downtown, but in other existing neighborhoods, we have quite a bit of reinvestment in our neighborhoods. We basically are planning for 40,000 new units by the year 2040, between now and then, over about a 24-year period. 8,000 of those units are expected to be of the infill type, so not on the edge. 80% on the edge, 20% as far as infill. So that's just to get an idea of some rough numbers, some big numbers, that we look at to meet the demands of our growing community. This image is our drainage basins around the urbanizing area of Lincoln. And I put that up there not really to get into the details of that, but this is to really reiterate that point about sewer service. We have a policy of using gravity flow sewer. What that means is that we use the natural topography of our drainage basins to allow the flow of the sewage to literally go downhill. It's a cheaper way of providing that service. And what it has done, because we've had this policy for so long, we have developed a very predictable way of developing our land, so that those landowners that are out there and the developers that have purchased options on that land, they have a good, solid understanding of what areas are going to open next, or how long it's going to take to get certain areas. And that's a key point of our comprehensive plan. It is a document that is truly followed, and it does have a lot of information in it that is useful to a lot of different entities. And this is just one example of that. But by doing this, this tells us, generally speaking, where we can expect growth to happen. So the next extension of a sewer line opens up another area of the expected area for growth. And that obviously gets into a very key point of where we want to plan for our schools. Yes?
So as you expand the system, do you add capacity at the treatment plant? Is that a long time down the future?
That's a very good question. We have existing capacity in our plants. We have two plants. We have existing capacity, and we have room for growth at those plants as well, and that is all part of our sewer master plan, that is based on the numbers that are in this comprehensive plan, as far as growth and projections of growth and direction of growth. At some point, we will have to have a discussion about an additional plant. We're not quite at that point yet, though. So right now, we can feel confident that we have the capacity to meet the demands of growth moving forward. The next image that I want to show you tonight is, this is our growth tier map, and what this tells you is the expected areas of growth out to the year 2040. By looking at that map, what you see is some yellowish area, and then some crosshats area, and then dark red and a pink color. If you add all that up, and then there's a black and white dash line on the outside of those areas, that is the area that we expect to grow into by the year 2040. What you also notice is that there are some larger areas in dark green that are outside of that black and white line. Those are areas that are called Tier 2, and that is the area that we expect to further go into beyond 2040. So this is really based on, if you go back and forth between these two lines, two slides, excuse me, they are based on the natural drainage areas, so the areas that we plan for that sewer service to get to. And so this kind of builds the expectation and the logical progression of opening up land, getting at urban services, and allowing it for development of the growth that is happening in our community. The two white arrows that you see there are pointing at areas that were updated in this latest update of the comprehensive plan that weren't slated for near-term development until this update occurred. One area is in the Stevens Creek, that's off of, between O Street going south to about Van Dorn, east of 84th Street. That is what we call the Stevens Creek area, and that is Stevens Creek's basin for that gravity flow sewer is an area that we are expecting to have significant growth in moving forward. That is very much a focal point of a lot of our growth. The other arrow that you see on the west side of our community, in the southwest area, that is just north of the Warlick Boulevard interchange with Highway 77. That's an area that 10 years ago was expected to get a Walmart. There was a lot of planning and infrastructure development out there. Then the Great Recession hit, and nothing has happened out there since, more or less, except for the horse race area. So that has been a focal area for us to say, we're actually going to get services in that area as well, and we're planning for that sewer line to be extended out to serve that area within the next six years. There's a major extension over in Stevens Creek that's expected within the next three years now. So we are saying that we're going to put those pipes in the ground, literally, to open up area in those areas for development. I would note that we also have a land use plan. This is a little bit more detailed than we probably need to get into tonight. I'm certainly willing and able to talk about this. But I will say that we are basically saying that our land use pattern is meeting the demands of our growth projections. There is one arrow that is shown on the citywide map there for our land use map, up in the northwest area. That is an area that has been changed in this update to residential future use instead of industrial use. So something to keep in mind when we talk about rooftops and students and things like that. There are some other changes out in the rural areas of the county, dealing with the demand for acres development. Doesn't have as much impact on the urbanizing area and the Lincoln Public Schools, but something to note.
Could you go back one slide?
Sure.
When you have them noted as a priority, just kind of as a clarification, does that mean, what does that mean to the city? I mean, in the sense of, it's driven, the building or the development there is driven by city helps drive it there? Is it driven by, you know, who wants to just build where? How do you figure that out?
A lot of it has to do with how much growth we are experiencing and what we expect, which is, again, kind of built into these growth projections that we have. But it also is a lot about where the growth is happening right now. Obviously, there's an awful lot of growth to the south. That is where then the emphasis of it, there will continue to be a very heavy emphasis on growth to the south. The areas that are highlighted here are more emerging areas that we're getting the infrastructure there for, to start to take on some of that capacity for that growth. The priority areas are identified based mostly on those drainage basins. So when you start seeing areas that are kind of split between the dark red and the pink, that quite honestly is based a lot on the drainage, and if it has or will soon have sewer service. So that's effectively how the priority areas are identified. We also get into kind of the land area mass and some basic capacity of that. And when we look at opening up areas, we have an idea of how much of that growth, how many units can be put into a certain area. So when we open up 1,000 acres, we know that that's roughly X amount of units.
But I ask my question, what drives that? Is it where the developers are wanting to go, or is it where the city's saying, let's go here first with our sewer pipes, and then we'll go here with our sewer pipes?
It's a combination. So when we do the update of the plan, it's a public process, and in this case, this update, we actively engage the landowners and the developers that are on the edge of the community, ask for their ideas, and we took those under consideration. Had a mini-process at the front end of this bigger process last year, so that we had an idea of what their interests were in the areas of interest. And that's why some of these changes actually took place. So it's not a perfect model, but at the same time, it is, it goes back and forth, and so we are always asking for input. And then, generally speaking, the predictability of this plan, it's been in place for quite a while in this format. It allows for that decision-making, both on the private side and the public side, to pretty much coalesce and make sense.
So the history says that this is really how it kind of works, kind of keeps...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So just as a quick follow-up on that, there's cost efficiencies as you extend a sewer line, and you continue that line along like a creek, like, for example, on Stevens Creek along the west side. And so in some ways, we're following just the geography of the land. I recall when I first came to Lincoln, folks would say that they're not going to go east of 84th Street, and what they were talking about was the sewerability of that watershed. Is that essentially correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The investment that has been put in along Stevens Creek is a very massive sewer pipe. Literally, at the largest point, you could drive a small car down it. But the point there is that the intention is for it to grab the capacity of the development all the way down to the south end. That green area, as you go further south, that's the 2060 line, that's the 2080 line. And so it's got the capacity to serve that full area. And so to maximize that investment, we want to keep opening up land going further south in that Stevens Creek area. So that's a good example of what you're talking about.
Okay. And then a second question would be, as we look at this 2040 plan, we, of course, are updating our 10-year plan, so 2027 is kind of the timeframe that we have in mind. As we look at the color coding on this map, it would be the hash-marked area and the dark red area that would be most relevant to our discussions.
Correct. I think you could take the... The red area is intended to be available for development by 2026.
Okay.
So that is a good way to look at it.
Okay.
Thank you. Sure. Any other questions? This is a slide that, it's not meant to be read, so don't worry. It is an indication of the type of information that we track. And this is that, on the left side of the screen is the Stevens Creek area that we have the focus on as far as expanding the sewer service into. And then on the right is that south area that has the majority of our growth currently, and will have a very large amount of growth moving forward, especially over the next 10 years. I point these two areas out because we track not only the active current development that's happening, but also the future capacity of those pieces of land. And we actually have numbers, and we have an idea of how many units are possible there and/or likely. And that is all the way out to the year 2040. So I point these two areas out because this is really where the growth is going to happen over the next 20, 25 years. We're going to have growth in other directions, but not nearly the amount of growth that's going to happen in these two areas. So this is, if I was going to suggest a focus area moving forward, and it's not meant to say we shouldn't be focusing on other areas for schools, it's meant for new development and new growth areas, these are the two areas to really focus on, because these are in the thousands and thousands of units that are just pretty much guaranteed to happen because of our consistent growth rate.
When you talk about the growth of housing in those areas, and we're talking single-family homes, I'm assuming, are we talking multi-development? Which are we doing?
It's a combination.
What's the range of affordability for those homes?
Well, I mean, that's very much market-driven. But I think, but one thing that we have noticed is that new construction is quite a bit more expensive than existing housing stock in Lincoln. And so one of the things, existing housing average price right now is somewhere in the $150,000, $160,000 range. New construction's more in the $280 range. And so that is, obviously, there's a big difference there. But when you get into affordability and meeting an income for our households, that $280 number is pretty much out of reach. But it depends on the development. It depends on partly how much was the land paid for, what was that cost to the landowner and developer. But also, in some cases, we have large developments. We have a development that's in for review and approval right now. It's called the Van Dorn Coalition. That's between Van Dorn and A Street, 84th Street and 98th Street. Not all of those acres in there, but a large chunk of them. When you have a large development like that, they often have a very wide range of type of housing unit, because they have the land to work with. So it kind of depends on what area you're talking about and what project we're dealing with.
Well, a good example would be when you look east of 84th, you have Harrison Heights off Holdridge, and then you have Waterford. And the affordability is extremely different between the two developments. And I guess I'm just trying to make sure we're not building one type of housing in an area, and that we make it marketable to families.
No. And I think one other point to be made there is that the multifamily apartment type of units to the total, we feel strongly that that's a big part of the affordability housing unit for Lincoln. There's quite a bit of, coming out of the Great Recession, there's quite a bit of constrained buying power for many people to be able to get the level of credit needed to buy a house. And it's not that we consider that a good thing, but I think it's a reality at this point in time. And so the affordability of a rental unit right now plays a significant role for those that just to have solid housing. And so that mix of the total is an important mix, multifamily with single-family.
So the multifamilies are mostly apartments, not necessarily in a condo-type format like they have in some of the areas?
Very much strongly towards apartment, multi-unit. The condo market really isn't as strong in Lincoln as it is in other areas. One little plug here on transportation, because we spent a lot of time on it with this update. We have a transportation plan that is constrained financially, which is a good thing in the sense that it is realistic and what we can afford to do. But it also is a struggle for us to be able to get the type of improvements out there, especially on the edge of the community, that we'd like to be able to do. It's something that we're actively talking about. What type of road should we require or expect out on the edges to meet the demand of the growth areas, but also to maintain what we have. And one thing we heard very strongly was that we should be maintaining the road networks that we have as best as we can, as well as use technology to make it more efficient, to be able to move traffic better through existing intersections. So there's a lot of information there that, if you're interested, I'd be more than happy to go into. But that does have applicability to... it more efficient, to be able to move traffic better through existing intersections. So there's a lot of information there that if you're interested, I'd be more than happy to go into. But that does have a applicability to where we're building schools, where we're planning for new schools and things like that. So it's something to keep in mind. A lot of this information is out on our website for your use. Go ahead, go ahead and let me know if you have any questions moving forward. I'd be more than happy to answer them. And I'll certainly answer questions today at this time.
Just one little question. You had said 40% multifamily. Was that a goal or is that where we currently are?
It's both.
Okay.
We are currently above that, recent, recent years. We're actually above that percentage of the total units approved in the last five years.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else?
Say, David, thank you again for meeting with us today and the times that you've come to our planning committee to help us prepare this. I really appreciate the close cooperation that we have between the school district and the city. It really helps that when we open a new school, that there, there's a road there ready to go and that we're putting schools in appropriate places where you expect the city to grow. So thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Only thing I want to put a plug in is thank you for saying we're one community and one district. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. As we transition, a couple of things that I'll mention about the conversation with David. There was a timely article in the Journal today that talks about city needs so many housing units. And there's a graph that is on that, part of that article. And that graph shares building permits. And there are single-family, there are town homes, and there are apartments and condominiums. And the light blue, and it might be hard for you to see there, are apartments and condominiums. And we talked about that percentage of apartments and condominiums being greater now than it used to be as compared to single-family homes. And it wasn't that long ago, for those of you who've been around, when we had MGT do a study in 2003. And when we had an apartment complex, we had very few students living in an apartment complex. The demographics of that today are much different. And so when we look at our formulas in terms of where kids and families are today, it's much different than just 13 or 14 years ago. And that's playing a difference into why we continue to grow. Because you look at this and the number of single-family building permits is not necessarily that great in comparison to 10 or 12 years ago when things were going very well. I mean, the single-family permits were more than double the last four or five years, and yet we continue to grow. And so that apartments is a new key factor that I think we have to pay attention to.
Scott, what's that number? Because I remember it was like one or something per unit or it's like three-fourths of a kid. It was, I don't know who has three-fourths of a kid, but.
I'd love to quote it, but I'll give you the wrong number.
But give me the right one.
We'll get you the right number.
Thank you.
The other thing that we, that David brought up was the importance of maintaining existing. And we all know how important that is because we've spent a lot of time and money and effort maintaining our existing buildings and infrastructure. And I'll tell you, talk about a good decision because we just have 60 sites and 60 buildings. And you think about the miles of roads and infrastructure that the city has to deal with. And we know what it's like to field complaints because we haven't taken care of things. You as a board have done a great job. Our community has supported that on our past bond issues of investing in existing facilities. And that's really important because everybody believes that we have great facilities, and we do. I mean, I would put our facilities up against anybody. But that's critical for us to maintain a solid school district and infrastructure to support our kids and students and staff. So a couple of things coming from that conversation. The only other thing before I kind of continue, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce, I know Gordon and Tim are back there, who are a couple of project managers who helped us move, move along smoothly. Matt Bellamy, Director of Purchasing, key players in our process. And there are many who aren't here, as mentioned earlier. Dr. Standish has been very supportive, Dr. Joel. The planning committee has really supported what we do, and I appreciate that because you ask good, hard questions. And we need that. We need to make sure that we're on top of our game and we're answering all the questions the right way. And we're not, you know, spinning our wheels or making bad decisions. So we appreciate that. And then you as a board, your foresight has really been critical to why we've been successful. And it's been successful because we spend a lot of time planning. And time planning is never wasted. Whether you make a decision or not based on that time, it's not wasted. You've done a good job of educating our community, and they've supported bond issues. And we've done a good job of managing the money. And we all know how, we talked about the word scope creep. We could always do more, but we know that there's a reality to what we do. And so we spend the money the right way. We, we're very practical about what we do. And we meet the needs the best we can. And then we hope for the best as we keep moving forward and our community is growing. So I thought I'd throw that out and we'll kind of keep moving forward. So the list up here is influential factors. And this is, again, kind of old news. We're going to spend most time tonight talking about enrollment growth. Not that all the rest of these aren't important, but enrollment growth has an impact on about 50% of the value of the 10-year plan that you have in front of you. So when you look at new schools, whether it's elementary, middle, or concepts to support high school growth, about 50% of that plan is enrollment growth. Programed efficiencies, it's really critical that we, our goal is consistency across the district. I don't care what building you're at, we want to make sure that you're provided consistent programs, consistent facilities, consistent grounds so that you can teach anywhere, or you can be a student anywhere, and you're going to get the same curriculum, the same delivery, be educated the same. And quite frankly, when you look at our buildings that are 101 years old versus those that are 15, other than the fact that the little keystone on the corner has a different date on it, you wouldn't know the difference in terms of what you're walking into. And we're proud of that fact. And we really promote that in terms of the way we pay attention to facilities. So programmed efficiencies, we look at that continuously at all of our buildings. It doesn't mean we don't have needs because there are some of those on this plan and on this list. We talk about curriculum delivery and technology. The last five years in terms of what you've done in technology and where technology has gone, whether it's digital curriculum and all of the money we've spent on technology, one-to-one devices, infrastructure in the classrooms, wireless. I'm nervous about, if that's what happened in five years, what will happen in the next 10? And that's important. That's an important question that I don't expect an answer, but that's a hard one for even me to answer in my shoes, or even our computing services team and all those who work with technology. Where will technology be? How will it drive even what our buildings look like in 10 years? And yet, you can go into any of our buildings, and we still have a traditional-looking classroom, but technology has really changed how that classroom is used. So a tough question that we have ahead because the last five has really changed a lot. We all know that. Safety and security, we spent a lot of money in the last several years too on our buildings. Our community, our board, we expect safe, secure school environments, but we also want them to be welcoming. We don't want to feel like we're walking up to an institution where it just feels uncomfortable. Yet we need, we need to make sure that our students and staff are safe. We've spent a lot of time, effort, money, design time, even processes at our buildings to make sure that checking in is, is a comfortable process, but very legitimate regarding safety. Sustainable practices. Of all of the organizations in our community, we need to be the leader in sustainable practices because we have 41,000 students that this is going to be their future. And we've talked about recycling, which is 15 years old, but composting food, renewable energy, those types of things, the habits that our kindergartners and first and second, third graders are learning today, that's going to be a habit for them when they become our age, where we've had to learn those things through life because those resources are disappearing and we need to find ways to conserve and do a better job. And so what a better opportunity than being the leader in that realm because we can teach our students, let alone implement all those practices. And I think we are, but I know we can do a better job. But sustainable practices, the way we do, use energy, geothermal, all those are important concepts that I think need to be on our influential factors list. And then the last one that I just talked about a little bit ago is protecting our investment. We spent a lot of money in the last 25 or 30 years on facilities and infrastructure, and I think we do a great job of maintaining it. And again, that's kudos to the board and our community for supporting what we do. But that's huge. I mean, that's probably one of the most important things because if we didn't do that, I don't think we would get support for future bond issues and investments in facilities. And so critical, probably one of the highest priorities, even though those aren't in priority order. Any questions on any of that? Some of this is redundant. You've seen this plan. David Carey talked about it. This is the one that was adopted in 2013. And you're going to see that difference here in a little bit as a comparison. This is a map that talks about that gravity flow. And this is kind of creeks and streams and tributaries. And so this again is what defines the comprehensive plan and how Lincoln grows. And so that light blue shaded area is Stevens Creek. Right now, in general terms, Lincoln itself is approximately 100 square miles, if you were to take the city limits. Stevens Creek is slightly more than 50 square miles. So just figure that out in your head in terms of where Lincoln's going to grow for the most part. It does not mean it will not grow in all directions. And I think the comprehensive plan will share that information graphically. But 50 square miles is a lot of area to cover. And Lincoln is investing heavily, as David mentioned, in sewer systems in that area. This is just another map that supports that. The red lines are existing major trunk lines for sanitary sewer. The blue lines are projected investments in their one- and six-year plan to invest in new sewer lines. So you can see, it isn't just south, it's not just east, it's southwest, it's west, it's northwest, it's northeast. Lincoln will grow in all directions, more heavily in the east and the south. But they're preparing themselves for development and future growth in all directions. The, the land use map that David referenced, I think, is another good one to kind of take a step back. And if you look at that map, the kind of goldenrod color is single-family residential, or it's residential development. If you were to divide that map into quadrants, it's pretty obvious which quadrant has the most of that color, the southeast quadrant. And you're going to see another map here in a little bit that talks about where our students live and where our city is growing. But if you look at that, the purple is industrial, the red is commercial. The majority of the residential in our community, right or wrong, is south and east, just based on the land use map. This is the one that was just recently adopted in December of 16. And so we put them side by side. David did a better job in showing some arrows of where those two growth areas are. But if you recall where they were, there was one, I want to see if I can get this cursor to work here. There was one right here. And look at this area compared to the 2013 map in terms of how it changed color. The dark red is 2025. And the second area is in southwest Lincoln, how the dark red area has increased or shown up on the map where it didn't exist before. So they do make periodic changes. That promotes development. As David also mentioned, it's kind of a combination of city investing and developers pressuring for investment in certain areas. And so those just add to targeted growth areas, along with many others that we're well aware of. So this is an old map that we've looked at. And those kind of light blue circles, we always kind of call them hotspots. That's a mile and a half diameter. These are areas where we've seen significant growth, building permits taken out in the last several years. And the two red circles, and those red will turn blue here before long, those are the two areas that expanded and moved forward on the comprehensive plan. So this map here is the traditional 27th and O Street, center of Lincoln. That's what we've all grown up, when you're my age, at knowing that's where the center of Lincoln really is, 27th and O. And all those kind of dark spots on there are actually students. Those are our students, 41,000 students roughly. And if you look in the upper right-hand corner, and it may be hard to read, that tells you how many students are within each of those quadrants. So northeast is 8,100 plus, northwest is 9,200 plus, southeast is over 14,000, and southwest is over 9,000. Those lower numbers are in the 20% to 23% range. And that high number, that 14,000, is about 35% range. Gives you an idea of where, demographically, our students live throughout the city. Nothing new based on that land use map. So we just did a little fun exercise. We said, where's the center of Lincoln geographically? And Lincoln is the yellow. It's not the school, school district boundary, it's just the yellow area. And if you took the yellow area, which we said was about 100 square miles, and said, okay, let's get 25 square miles in each quadrant roughly, the center of Lincoln really isn't too far from that 27th and O that we've always thought. It's really only a couple of blocks to the south and a couple of blocks to the east. You can see what it does to the numbers up in the upper right-hand corner because we overlaid our student numbers on that same map. This next map, though, is the one where we took a little bit bigger leap. And we said, okay, let's move that center of Lincoln a half a mile south and a half a mile east. And now we're at the intersection of 33rd and Randolph. So that doesn't seem like a lot when you look at it on a map like that, but a half a mile is quite a bit. And it really evened out most of the quadrants, other than the northeast quadrant. And we might say, well, how did that happen? When you look at northeast, what they gained is half mile all along O Street, between O Street and Randolph, clear to 27th, there's a lot of students there. That's what they gained. And this little section right here is what they lost. This little section right here is far more dense with students than the area that they gained. More of an exercise than anything, but Lincoln really is growing south and east in terms of where our student population is. That does have an impact a little bit more on travel, those kind of things. But it's not going to dictate necessarily exactly where we build buildings. But it was kind of an exercise because it was one that we had talked about and had been requested. So moving forward, we're going to come back to growth. And some of the questions that were asked in the last work session and came up in planning is, where's the stress points? Can we handle growth? Go ahead, Matt.
I guess a question, which we talked a little bit about in planning, but going back to that last map. So as we, as we talk about building schools in the future and we say northeast, are we using this new 33rd and Randolph? Or are we kind of still sticking to the 27th and O Street quadrants? Or is it not really impact too much what we're going to look at today?
You know, I think this was an exercise because we had had the discussion. Quite frankly, we're going to build schools where there's rooftops and kids.
Sure.
I think, from the planning perspective, and I'm, I'm not expecting David to answer this, but I do think the traditional 27th and O is going to disappear in 10 or 15 or 20 years. That might be 40th and A in another 10 or 15 years. And so we may never be able to give that up, that it's 27th and O because it's an easy, O Street's kind of the main drag that cuts Lincoln in half on north and south. And 27th was kind of the same. But I, but I think you can definitely tell by growth and where the comprehensive plan is going that it's moving south and east.
Yeah.
So.
I do find this exercise interesting about 33rd and Randolph as the center because I, I do think it goes and shows that the northwest part of Lincoln is also growing. I realize that with the Stevens Creek sewer line and all that, that we anticipate a lot of growth in southeast Lincoln. But I think this particular map, that's a little bit more population-based according to where we're at now, indicates that growth that's happening in northwest. And when we've done our drive-arounds, that's also what I was sensing, that northwest was also very strong. So I think that we need to keep that in mind as we move forward.
And that, your point is timely. And we talked about it a little bit ago, but even though the conversation will tend to go south and east a lot, we can't forget that Lincoln is growing in all directions and our needs are still in all directions. And so, good point. And I, I don't think we need to, we can lose track of that. We're going to have pressure in all directions.
Kathy Denary?
I think it's building on what Barb just said. As you look at the density of where the children live, because I really don't care. As you look at the density of where the children live, because I really don't care where the houses are, I care where the kids live. And that affordability question, for me, is like this big. It's not where the houses are, because if you put a 4,000-square-foot house, and it only has two kids, and I've got a 4,000-square-foot apartment that's got 18 kids in it, that's definitely more dense for the number of students and where we need to have buildings. So, I'd like us to also keep track of where the kids are moving, how many multi, what the change is in that multifamily, and also, the recycling of the houses. I know the neighborhood I live in, no house is staying on the market more than seven days at all. And, and seven days might be stretching it.
Annie?
So, kind of this goes back to Dave, but downtown will never change. But is there going to be kind of a new concept of what, because I think, to me, 27th and O is because partly, you know, where downtown and how the center of the city was?
And the Capitol.
And the Capitol, and yeah, being, you know, and the university. So, I see, you know, with all this growth, it's kind of an interesting thing to me of like, we can change it, but can we really change it? I mean, I don't exactly know what my comment is, except it's like, are we going to be creating new down, smaller, like more hallocks, but stronger hallocks, as we keep going further away from our traditional downtown?
I think that's a, I think that's a very good question to ask. Our expectation is that downtown will continue to be the largest area of activity and a growing area, in the sense of more housing in downtown, along with the employment and the university and the state capitol that's already there. But in a major entertainment district as well, as it is today. But maybe more of a mix with more housing with what's there today. So, we see that as staying strong and being kind of the main, the biggest area, when you think about mixed use and different activities happening. But we also talk a lot about, because we're effectively going to have a city of another 90,000 people.
Yeah.
Additional 90,000 people by 2040. And, and so, we talk a lot about where are they going to be located, but they're pretty much going to be all over the place. If you, if you get to that 40,000 new housing units, about 26,000 will be east and south. 14,000 will be northwest, northeast, and southwest. So, that's, those are rough numbers, but that's something to keep in mind of the distribution. But talking about new areas of activity and trying to have focal points, that is another thing we talk about. And right now, we have a lot of thought that along O Street and along 27th Street, especially North 27th Street, that those are areas that could have more of those intense areas. And then, with that, would bring along with it more infrastructure as far as moving people around. And there's a, there's a lot of information there to get into if you want to, but that is kind of how we look at that, that we look at some of those areas that we can have more urban-type areas. But having said all that, we still expect the majority of our growth to be happening on the edges in these new areas. So, it's kind of a balancing act between, between different ways of looking at the future.
Thank you. I'm really getting into this conversation. I think that Kathy brought up some very critical points here, that for us as a school board, we need to really focus on. And that is, affordability of housing is going to be a greater determinant for us on growth of student population. So, though there may be a lot of new house tops in southeast Lincoln, I think we need to ask the question, "How many of those house tops? How many bedrooms are in them?" Because that makes a huge difference on whether there are families that have children there, and how many children there are. And also, you were talking about, well, more affordable housing would be apartments. But I think that most of us Midwestern folks, when we have families, desire to have a house in the yard, even if it's a small yard, for our kids to be playing in. So, that leads me to thinking about affordability, about the condition of our older neighborhoods, and also looking more seriously at the kinds of developments that we may see, like at Honor Park kind of area, that, that's a kid engine out there. And I think we have to keep that in mind. I think it's easy to go and think, "Oh, wow, there's all these houses in southeast Lincoln." But if average cost is going to be $280,000, most of the people I know who are having families aren't going to be moving there. So, that is going to be influencing some of our decision-making about schools.
Agreed. Okay, good, Matt, go ahead.